I'll be in at regular terms tomorrow, so they didn't get it fixed because they're missing a part, but he said that whatever he need now, though he got to the point where he needs to rest and then they'll just come back and do it. That's how I'm coming back in the house. That's necessary. That's how I'm coming back in the house. That's necessary. I have a gift with me.
Huh. Oh, okay. Oh, I think we would have to turn it up. Uh-huh. Yeah, we, uh, we think we did send a message to the young people that we out there trying to, trying to help them, but they lost that the speed that they were doing. They gotta, they gotta talk to them. They really want to learn. They're trying to learn. But, uh, anyway, it's just me.
Hey, Sam, Sam, he said, "No way we're gonna take care of that town now." So you think that's all that the cat is gonna start talking about?
That's what we talked about that film last week. It was like once. People, people. Yes. Yes.
We wanna give a nice man.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, everybody.
We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for today, which is January the 18th, Tuesday, January 18th. Our invocation is by Elder Unique Mark Parker of the Daystar Tabernacle International Church. After the invocation, please stand for the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you, Lord God, for your great grace and your abundant mercy. We thank you for your kindness to us, Lord. We thank you for keeping this county, Father God, healthy and well. Lord God, we thank you for just being a shield of protection around us, so that no evil harm or danger come near us, Lord God. We thank you for all the city council, our mayor, Lord God, the authorities, Lord God, police officers, everyone, Father God, has delegated authority here. We pray, Father God, that things will always go well for them, Lord God. We pray that you would guide them with wisdom and strength and understanding, that their homes will be prosperous, Lord God, and that this county will be a prosperous, bright light, Father God, for the world to see, Lord God. And we thank you that this will be a great business meeting, Lord God, and everything will be done decent and in order, and everything will be to your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Congratulations. Put the flag, 'cause you didn't say something fair. You're the public, for which you stand, for your nation. You are God, you are God's justice. Justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem and Pastor Elder Parker. We appreciate the invocation. Please extend our wishes and Happy New Year to Apostle Horton and his beautiful bride. We thank you so much for coming to the Douglasville City Council meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. We do have a presentation of a letter of recognition to the president and coach, Charles Jones, and championship team members and coaches honoring the Douglasville Tiger Cubs as they have won the Super Bowl Tournament for Youth Recreational Football. Coach Jones, are you here?
Come on, brah.
Let's give him a hand as he comes. I'm going to read your congratulatory letter, and then if you would ask some of the coaches to come forward and maybe the quarterback or whoever a representative from, because we can't have everyone in the picture. We just take a picture this way, and then we'll take one with the coaches and yourself and the council members. So I'll read the letter, and then you can say whatever words you'd like to say to the team and to the City of Douglasville and all the residents that were so very proud of you. January 18th, 2022, dear Coach Jones, I wish to congratulate you and the Tiger Cubs on winning the Super Bowl of 2021 Youth Recreational Football Season. The Douglasville Tiger Cubs organization has been a fantastic partner in this community for many, many years. There have been so many quality young people that have developed essential skills that they will practice throughout their lives. The win is a testament to what hard work, dedication, and working as a unified team can achieve. I hope that you all have had a wonderful and deserved celebration. You've earned it. Again, congratulations on this accomplishment. We, the Douglasville City Council and mayor, wish to congratulate you and your staff as you continue to teach our young people valuable lessons. I also look forward to watching the Tiger Cubs grow into young men of strong character and integrity. Keep up the good work. God bless you, Mayor Rochelle Robinson of Douglasville City Council. Coach Jones?
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for inviting us out. It's not about me, it's about these kids and these coaches. I thank God for giving me the chance and opportunity to be a part of this. Each, each one of these kids, I tell all of them, they're my kids when they're on that field. It's, it touched my heart, my mind, and my soul when I see these kids happy and running up and down that field. Because my thing of it is, if I can just reach one, I've done my job.
Yes, sir.
God can tell me, "Well done."
Yes, sir.
Good and faithful service. Because I feel that it's, I was put here to make sure that the kids develop and be good, strong young men, mentally, physically, spiritually, sports-wise, and all.
Yes, sir.
But I'd just like to call up a couple of my board members.
Yes, sir.
First of all, my Vice President, Warren Taylor. My football director, Markeith Woodlock. My secretary, Brandy, is she here?
No.
Okay. Team mom, Alicia. My bookkeeper, Dina. My athletic director, Coach Steve. All right. I know we can't have everybody up here, but first of all, I'd like to say thank you guys for all you do. I know sometimes I can be a butthole, but at the end of the day, we all do what we need to do for these kids. And I appreciate it, and you just don't know how much I appreciate it. Thank you, Markeith, for all the hard work you do to make sure these kids get uniforms. Thank you, Coach Warren, for all you do. Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, Dina. Thank you, Coach Jones. Okay, I'm just gonna call a few of them up, starting with my five U. Can I get, is Justin Zachary here?
No, he not here.
Okay, he won Player of the Year.
Oh, great.
Um, can I get six U's? Seven U's? Come in, number two. Katie. Katie Necker. My nine U. What am I running back at? Yes, sir. All right. Twelve U, come here. Quarterback. Marie. Come in, Marie. This is just a part
Yes, sir.
of the organization. These guys put in a lot of hard work, dedication, time, and I let them all know, school come first.
Yes, sir.
Because after red football, if you don't get the grades,
Mm-hmm.
you wasting my time, your time, and on Friday nights, you wasting your time if you ain't got no grades, because you ain't gonna go to the next level.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, Coach.
Because that's the first thing when a scout come to you in high school, the first thing you ask the coach, "Can I see you the grade?"
Yes, sir.
If he ain't got the grades, he wasting my time. If he wasting Friday nights, he might as well go play video games.
Yes, sir.
But, fatherly due, I'd just like to say thank you guys.
Thank you.
You guys have anything you want to say?
Yeah, Marisa, put your fingers up there for the, those are some of them.
Woo! All right, so we'll come around and take a picture with these members. Coach, Director Bass, if you come forward, please, and the council members. I don't know if we have enough space, or if you want to stand behind a podium. Yes, sir. You'll simply, I'll present the letter, and we'll take a picture. Our staff will take a picture.
My nine U went to Pensacola, Florida, Panama City, I'm sorry, Panama City, and won the national championship down there. My twelve U also won the national championship, not just here in Georgia. We taking this thing on the road. We representing Douglasville when we go. We representing Douglasville very well.
Thank you so much.
One, two, three.
Take a nice picture.
Ready, coach?
Ready.
All right. On the count of three. One, two, three. And then let me do one more. All right, one, two, three. All right, thank you.
All right, guys. Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys coming out. I know some people say it's pretty hard, so thank you, guys. We really appreciate it.
We will resume the meeting after the chambers are cleared.
Mm-hmm.
You look so greedy.
You too, boy.
You see that so much?
You look so cute.
How you doing?
Yeah, how you doing there, man?
What's up?
I read up today, guy. I'm proud we got that three off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's crazy.
Ready to go?
It's gonna be a lot of stuff.
It's gonna be a lot of stuff. Yeah.
Come on, go some stupid stuff.
I know you want to come out.
But you doing a good time.
Appreciate it.
Hello. Stay out of trouble. Oh, I need to call and check on him. Okay, I'll do it. Thank you so much for letting me know. Happy New Year. Thank you. All right, thank you. Mm-hmm.
All right, we have staff back in the room. I know it. Thanks so much. I'd like to welcome you all to the City of Douglasville's City Council Regular Voting Meeting. This is a City Council meeting of agenda items that will, official action will be taken this evening on the items that were discussed last Thursday at the Legislative Work Session. If the business you're listed for is not on the agenda, there is an opportunity under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your issues. Just a few protocol issues I'd like to go over. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts, for us to be able to discuss and make our decision. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not hold on a conversation with anyone from the audience, and if you have a cell phone or any electronic device, we ask that you please put those in silent mode until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. The agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. We ask that you will not repeat the information that you presented on last Thursday unless you have some new information for us to consider. We may ask additional questions based on that information that you present, and the committee chairperson, there is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to discuss on those agenda items. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record, and there is a form that you should have filled out that's outside on the desk, and we do have virtual, again, available. Is there anyone signed up to speak virtually, City Manager?
We only have Councilwoman Burdandley that's on, but no citizens are on for speaking.
Thank you so much, City Manager. This is not a question-and-answer format or a debate. We're here to receive the information and make a decision after we deliberate. And that is it. If you have any printed material, we ask that you would please give that to our city clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker, I think it's Ms. Candace who's with us this evening, and she will disseminate that information to us. Now we'll move on with the agenda, and there are paper agendas outside on the desk and/or there are virtual ones here. So we'll move on now with the minutes, and there are minutes of the special meeting and Legislative Work Session of January 6, 2022, and the committee meeting, executive session, and regular meeting of January 10, 2022. I open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes. So moved. Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much. Ms. Candace, did you get Mayor Pro Tem or Councilman Davis?
Pardon me? Somebody come on and press the button.
Did someone press the button?
No.
Councilman Davis?
I don't have a button.
It doesn't look like the...
I got Councilman Davis.
You have Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes as presented. Do we see any corrections or deletions or anything with the minutes from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor...
Excuse me?
Oh, I apologize, Councilmember Burdandley.
No, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to know, do I need to refresh? I don't see a voting, um, item for me.
Technology?
You all would just refresh your computers, mayor, and then in the meantime, if you just speak, raise your hand for your vote. Um, Councilwoman Burdandley, if you can put up the little emoji hand, we'll be able to see.
Sure. I can do that. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, City Manager, we've refreshed. It's not, it's not appearing for us. Is it coming now? Tada! Technology, don't you love it? Okay. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. I open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, have we voted on the minutes approval?
Oh, I apologize. We had, did have a question from Councilmember Burdandley. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Adams. Do we see any additions or anything to connect with the minutes for approval? To change anything, or are they all fine? Outside the comment that Councilmember Burdandley has made about technology, which we think is getting remedied, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If you have your, there you go. Opposed, nay. The ayes have, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. I mean, the minutes are approved unanimously. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. I open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any corrections, deletions, or any concerns? Thank you, Councilwoman Burdandley. No hand emoji?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. We'll move on then to item number seven, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items tonight.
Yes, sir.
Under Finance, we'll start with item A, Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2021-22 Splotch Fund Budget. Ms. Karen Callen had a discussion with us and presented that information on Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
I would invite any comment or question that we may have of Ms. Callen or of staff prior to a motion. Ms. Callen, did you need to add anything to your presentation from Thursday? If you would come forward and just, you know the drill.
Karen Callen, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. No, sir, I don't have anything to add for the Splotch Fund unless you want to discuss. We do have Mr. Cartwright here to talk about the golf course, which we do have amendments in the general fund for the golf course, but also, as you know, we've had a lot of upgrades that we paid out of Splotch Funds as well, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Mr. Cartwright's presentation would be under the general fund, or would it be under the Splotch Fund?
It would be appropriate to do either one, but we do have a general fund budget amendments this evening for the West.
Okay. Councilwoman Burdandley, do you have any, since you were not present with us on Thursday, were there any questions that you had concerning the presentation?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead. If it, if it pleases everyone, we'll go ahead and allow Mr. Cartwright to make his presentation, and then he can, he can exit. That way we'll move on in the essence of time. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Cartwright, 9090 Rose Avenue. So as Ms. Callen mentioned, I have a couple items here. One is on the Splotch Amendment, and one is on the General Fund Amendment. On the Splotch Amendment, we have the maintenance building plans or overview, just to get that money allocated for that project. You guys have a PDF with a couple of the renderings and the kind of an aerial overview of that project, so if there are any further questions that weren't discussed Thursday, I'm here to answer any of those.
Madam Mayor, council?
Don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cartwright, we thank you for coming in with that, and I know Mr. Bass did give us some information on Thursday night concerning it. Appreciate you all wanting to go forward and use those funds from the Splotch left over to, to be able to do some other projects. Ms. Danley, did you have any question or comment concerning that?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then I don't presume that we have any on the...
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where are those renderings under? Which item are they placed? Are they under the, because I'm not seeing under either of the budget items.
They're not attached.
They're not attached. They are not attached. Okay, so basically, it would be the same general information that Mr. Bass gave us on Thursday night. Mr. Cartwright, would you like to, to give us any other information on the building or your proposed use of it, anything like that you'd like to add? You, you weren't here on Thursday, so you weren't familiar with what Mr. Bass might have said, but...
We, Mr. Bass and I discussed it in advance.
Okay.
I don't think I have anything to add, unless y'all need some clarification on anything.
Okay. Council, Madam Mayor? Thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Cartwright. Then seeing no other questions on that item, I will go forward and make a motion to approve item 21-570 for the general fund, I'm, Splotch Fund Budget Amendment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's been properly moved in second. Councilmember, who did the second? Councilman Watts, thank you. It's been moved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Watts to approve item 21-570. Do we have any questions or comments as related to this item from council members? Thank you. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have, 21-570 unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll look then at item 21-571.
Mm-hmm.
Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2021-22 General Fund Budget. Ms. Callen, same basic question. I know that Councilwoman Burdandley was not with us on Thursday night, so she may or may not have questions concerning that budget amendment.
I do not, thank you, Chairman.
Anything to add, Ms. Callen?
No, sir, nothing.
Okay. And I'm assuming then, Mr. Cartwright, you didn't have anything in this particular item? I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level dealing with the facts for us to be able to discuss and make our decision. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not hold on a conversation with anyone from the audience. And if you have a cellphone or any electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. The agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. We ask that you will not repeat the information that you presented on last Thursday unless you have some new information for us to consider. We may ask additional questions based on that information that you present. And the committee chairperson, there is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to discuss on those agenda items. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record. And there is a form that you should have filled out that's outside on the desk, and we do have virtual, again, available. Is there anyone signed up to speak virtually, City Manager?
We only have Councilwoman Burt Danley that's on, but no citizens are on for speaking.
Thank you so much, City Manager. This is not a question-and-answer format or a debate. We're here to receive the information and make a decision after we deliberate. And that is it. If you have any printed material, we ask that you would please give that to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, I think it's Ms. Candace who's with us this evening, and she will disseminate that information to us. Now we'll move on with the agenda, and there are paper agendas outside on the desk and/or there are virtual ones here. So we'll move on now with the minutes. And there are minutes of the special meeting and legislative work session of January 6, 2022, and the committee meeting, executive session, and regular meeting of January 10, 2022. I open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much. Ms. Candace, did you get Mayor Pro Tem or Councilman Davis?
[inaudible]
Pardon me?
[inaudible].
Did someone press the button?
No.
I don't have a button.
It doesn't look like the...
I got Councilman Davis.
You have Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes as presented. Do we see any corrections or deletions or anything with the minutes from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor...
Excuse me?
Oh, I apologize, Councilmember Burt Danley.
No, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to know, do I need to refresh? I don't see a voting item for me.
Technology.
You all would just refresh your computers, Mayor, and then in the meantime, if you just speak, raise your hand for your vote. Councilwoman Burt Danley, if you can put up the little emoji hand, we'll be able to...
Sure.
Thank you.
I can do that, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, City Manager, we've refreshed. It's not appearing for us. Is it coming now? Tada! Technology, don't you love it? Okay. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. I open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, have we voted on the minutes' approval?
Oh, I apologize. We had, did have a question from Councilmember Burt Danley. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Adams. Do we see any additions or anything to connect with the minutes for approval? To change anything, or are they all fine? Outside the comment that Councilmember Burt Danley has made about technology, which we think is getting remedied, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If you have your, there you go. Opposed, nay. The ayes have, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. I mean, the minutes are approved unanimously. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. I open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any corrections, deletions, or any concerns? Thank you, Councilwoman Burt Danley. No hand emoji?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. We'll move on then to item number seven, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items tonight.
Yes, sir.
Under Finance, we'll start with item A, Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2021-22 Splotch Fund Budget. Ms. Karen Callen had a discussion with us and presented that information on Thursday. I would invite any comment or question that we may have of Ms. Callen or of staff prior to a motion. Ms. Callen, did you need to add anything to your presentation from Thursday? If you would come forward and just, you know the drill.
Karen Callen, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. No, sir, I don't have anything to add for the Splotch Fund unless you want to discuss. We do have Mr. Cartwright here to talk about the golf course, which we do have amendments in the general fund for the golf course, but also, as you know, we've had a lot of upgrades that we paid out of Splotch Funds as well, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Mr. Cartwright's presentation would be under the general fund, or would it be under the Splotch Fund?
It would be appropriate to do either one, but we do have general fund budget amendments this evening for the West Pines.
Okay. Councilwoman Burt Danley, do you have any, since you were not present with us on Thursday, were there any questions that you had concerning the presentation?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead. If it pleases everyone, we'll go ahead and allow Mr. Cartwright to make his presentation, and then he can exit. That way we'll move on in the essence of time. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Cartwright, 9090 Rose Avenue. So as Ms. Callen mentioned, I have a couple items here. One is on the Splotch Amendment, and one is on the general fund amendment. On the Splotch Amendment, we have the maintenance building plans or overview, just to get that money allocated for that project. You guys have a PDF with a couple of the renderings and the kind of an aerial overview of that project, so if there are any further questions that weren't discussed Thursday, I'm here to answer any of those.
Madam Mayor, Council?
I don't have any.
Mr. Cartwright, we thank you for coming in with that, and I know Mr. Bass did give us some information on Thursday night concerning it. Appreciate you all wanting to go forward and use those funds from the Splotch left over to be able to do some other projects. Ms. Danley, did you have any question or comment concerning that?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then I don't presume that we have any on the...
Where is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where are those renderings under? Which item are they placed? Are they under the, because I'm not seeing under either of the budget items.
They're not attached.
They're not attached. They are not attached. Okay, so basically, it would be the same general information that Mr. Bass gave us on Thursday night. Mr. Cartwright, would you like to give us any other information on the building or your proposed use of it, anything like that you'd like to add? You weren't here on Thursday, so you weren't familiar with what Mr. Bass might have said, but...
We, Mr. Bass and I discussed it in advance. I don't think I have anything to add unless y'all need some clarification on anything.
Okay. Council, Madam Mayor? Thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Cartwright. Then seeing no other questions on that item, I will go forward and make a motion to approve item 21-570 for the general fund, I'm, Splotch Fund budget amendment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's been properly moved in second. Councilmember, who did the second? Councilman Watts, thank you. It's been moved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Watts to approve item 21-570. Do we have any questions or comments as related to this item from council members? Thank you. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-570 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll look then at item 21-571. Adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year 2021-22 general fund budget. Ms. Callen, same basic question. I know that Councilwoman Burt Danley was not with us on Thursday night, so she may or may not have questions concerning that budget amendment.
I do not, thank you, Chairman.
Anything to add, Ms. Callen?
No, sir, nothing more.
Okay. And I'm assuming then, Mr. Cartwright, you didn't have anything in this particular item?
I would just like to say that this will be, there will be other amendments down the road with revenue that we will have to amend. We had a tremendous first half of the year. These specific items just needed to be on this amendment so that we could replenish our inventory. These are the items directly tied to what we're selling in the pro shop or in the food and beverage operations, but we'll be back in the spring when we have a better figure for what revenues are looking like. Right now, we're about 30% ahead year-to-date.
Thirty percent. Thank you so much, Mr. Cartwright. Great report. We appreciate all that you do there at West Pines. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Burt Danley?
No, sir.
All righty. Thank you very much. Then we make a motion on item 21-571 to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 21-571. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-571 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last item under Finance tonight, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Croy Engineering LLC to provide professional and consulting services for specific residential multimodal projects for Ward 1. Ms. McCowen?
Yes, April McCowen, 6701 Church Street, Project Manager. What you have in front of you is the same contract from the Thursday's presentation, which is for the multimodal evaluation of Ward 1, specifically residential streets, looking for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements. The total contract amount, which will be with Croy Engineering, will be $70,360, and that is a lump sum cost.
Thank you, Ms. McCowen. I know that we had a conversation and some information provided by staff on Thursday. Is there anyone that had any questions concerning this item? Madam Mayor, Council? Councilwoman Burt Danley?
No questions.
Okay. Nothing to add, then, Ms. McCowen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I'll make a motion that we approve item 22-023.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, I had a dual second. Did you get it, Ms. Candace?
I have Mayor Pro Tem as the second.
Thank you so much. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair and second by Mayor Pro Tem to approve item 22-023. Do we have any additional comments or questions? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 22-023 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and staff, Ms. McCowen and Ms. Callen. We'll move on to Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burt Danley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you so much. We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Motion to remove the table item 21-595.
Okay, so motion to remove from the table, item 21-595. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of removing item 22-031 from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, this motion is, this item is removed from the table.
Okay.
Item A.
Item B?
Mm-hmm.
Better write the screen clear.
I know, look at our maps.
Table from, table from January 10, 2022, Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the Charter of the City of Douglasville to revise the corporate limit war map based on 2020 U.S. Digital Services Protection Act. Ms. Woodward, please.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Staff does not have anything additional, but did omit to say that the overall range of deviation from the ideal population is at 3.82% with this version of the proposed war map, and the 3.82% is well below the 10% deviation that is generally considered as acceptable for municipal redistricting. Would you like for staff to report again the changes made to the wards?
Hi, Ms. Woodward. Thank you all for being patient with me. We had death in our family. I don't have to have like a full overview, but I just wanted to clarify, for Ward 3, I did meet with April last week briefly, and I spoke with Councilman Davis. My understanding is that the only changes right now are the houses on Brown Street, two houses on the old Brown Street or soon to be Mr. Vance, but everything else was pretty much put back. Am I correct?
That is correct. For Ward 3, the changes is mainly the subdivision known as the Rock Hill Gardens, and there are also, in addition to that, there are two residents off of James Vance Street and one commercial property that city staff would propose to draw into Ward 2. To the west side of Ward 3, there is actually a newly annexed piece that is west of South Flat Rock Road that would be drawn into Ward 2 as well. Previously, meaning that the current map did not, has not really drawn that into Ward 3, but by operation of law, it was considered Ward 3 when it was newly annexed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Anyone else, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Ms. Adams.
Now that Ms. Woodward has brought that to our attention, I'm looking at the revised war map, proposed war map for unit, for Ward 2 and 3. It appears that only the east side of Ella Street would then be in Ward 2, and the west side of Ella Street would be in Ward 3. Is that correct, Ms. Woodward? Or is that all of Ella Street, east and west, or north and south, depending upon what direction you're looking at it from?
So the boundaries are drawn by the center line of the street.
Okay.
So you could say that one, the south side of the center line of Ella Street is in Ward 2, and the north side of the center line is in Ward 3.
Okay. Just want to make sure that clarification. It would also seem then that on the western edge of that, South Flat Rock, then the east side of South Flat Rock would be in Ward 3, and the west side would be in Ward 2. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all that I have.
Councilwoman Estes?
Yeah, I have one question for clarification, because it's hard to tell from the map itself. But in Ward 5, the new addition, the little finger coming off of Lee Road, that seems to be the Villas at West Ridge complex, is that the entire complex, or is it just a part of it?
That is the entire complex.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much. And just for clarity, a general overall explanation of our ward map changes for the citizens is that although we have five wards, we have seven representatives because we have two super wards, one in Ward 2 and one in Ward 3. So we have population growth in the city. We have about 35,000 people in the city, and so that every council member has an equitable amount of 5,000 constituents and residents. Each council person has 5,000, and that's why we had to kind of draw the lines to make it equitable.
That is correct.
So we have seven council members with 5,000 citizens per council member, and the mayor has all 35,000.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might ask one other question of Ms. Woodward. I have not had opportunity to speak with my fellow council member in Ward 2. Ms. Miller, and I'm assuming that she has met with you and is satisfied with the ward layout?
We have met with her, but when we met with Councilwoman Miller, we have not yet proposed this current drawing, but she is overall, she is over, she was presented with the other changes in Ward 2, and she knows that the area known as Rolling Hills Estate, that there would be changes around that area.
Okay. Thank you, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, go ahead and make my motion.
So you have a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, 21-595.
Thank you so much. Have a motion to approve by the Chairs. There a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 21-595. Do we have any additional comments or questions? I know we've had some to discuss. Yes, sir?
When we get our machine up and running into that, will we get a bigger version?
You will.
Because right now, even with my reading glasses on...
I know, that's right. I was trying to look at a magnifying glass, and my, it's too much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of approving item 21-595, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Burt Danley. I miss been...
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so all those in favor, 21-595 is unanimously approved. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to item number 11, Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight. Adopt an ordinance to extend the original employee vaccination incentive program created by ORD-2021-43 to continue to incentivize employees to receive COVID vaccines and booster shots and authorize the appropriation of an additional $76,701 from the American Rescue Plan Act funds for this extended program. And Ms. Austin Bing, or...
I'm going to cover that, Councilman Watts. As you all know, you had requested that we look into possibly extending our program. So the difference with this program and the one that we previously had is we have included the opportunity for those getting their booster shots, as well as reducing the amount that we originally had, which was $500. The boosters would only provide a $250 incentive, but for those who would be first-time users or participants, I would say, of the program, they would receive that initial benefit that was offered during the first. So this would extend that program through September 30 of this year.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. I just was wondering if Ms. Councilwoman Burt Danley had any input or questions about the program?
I don't. I'm in support of whatever we can do to help get this virus under control. And if I may, I do have to log off right now. You all are going back with family, so thank you, and I'll see you next week, this weekend.
Yes, praying for your family.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burt Danley. Do we have any other com, oh, I saw Councilman Davis's hand up.
Yes, sir. I would like all the information to get out to all the staff and employees. So in September, October, they see me, they won't be coming back saying they forgot, they was too busy. So when I see them, I'm going to wear them out, let them know, get it in. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Well, I, I, I think it's, it's an important program, but I also think that there's folks that have made a decision based on their own health needs, and so I would encourage people to get with their doctor and find out what's best for them and make a decision based on that. And I appreciate the staff's efforts to try to incentivize the vaccinations. So any other questions before we make a motion? All right, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 22-015.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Which, did I, which council member?
We have Councilman Davis as the second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilman Watson, second by Councilmember Davis, to approve item 22-015. Do we have any additional comments or questions? Thank you, not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 22-015 is unanimously approved. That's all you have, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to item number 12, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have three items tonight under Planning and Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
We will start with item A. Consider a request under Section 12.05B7 to waive the time lapse requirement and allow the reapplication of the same variances, a variance to reduce the required 50-foot string buffer in Section 9.01E1 of the Unified Development Ordinance for a variance of 50 feet for remaining requirement of 0 feet on the north and south sides of a lot, and a variance to reduce the required 75-foot string buffer in Section 9.01E2 of the Unified Development Ordinance for a variance of 75 feet for remaining requirement of 0 feet on the north and south side of a lot of 98.79 acres at Georgia Highway 5 and Bright Star Connector, affecting the same land and/or any portion thereof that was defeated by the mayor and city council within 12 months, but not less than more, not less than six months from the last action date of July 6, 2021. Property is located, Land Lot 158, 159, 161, and 162, District 2, Section 5, Parcel 31, application by Hughes Ray Company. Mr. Ryan Anderson is here, staff, to help us with this. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. Staff doesn't have any new information to present. Thank you, sir. So we have had a discussion on Thursday night concerning this, and basically the request is to allow there to be a reapplication. I will, I will have the applicant come forward and explain that position, but it's nothing more than to allow that application to be turned in to the city. It's not approving anything else. It's not approving a development plan. It's not approving a design. It's not approving any changes. But I'll give the attorney for the applicant the opportunity to speak again. Go ahead, Mr. Fowler.
Joe Fowler, Post Office, Box 49, Douglasville. Good to see you all. The ordinance does permit the reconsideration after the denial. It's now been a period of six months. What we're seeking simply is that you defer any action on the variance from the city's guidelines until the state buffer is granted. At that point, the council can take up the request by approving our reconsideration. It simply means that we can avoid a two- or three-week delay in the required notice so that it can be reconsidered. Nothing substantive will occur at this point. It's simply allowing us to jump over a procedural hurdle so that we can move the process along at such time and if we obtain state approval. That's the nature of the request.
Thank you, sir. I'll open the floor for any questions or comments that Madam Mayor or council may have that may have come up since Thursday. Yes, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I did watch the proceedings online because I wasn't able to attend the meeting, and I received a question about the DRI. Is this requested for this project?
It's already been obtained.
Pardon me?
The DRI has already been obtained.
Okay, it has been.
Yes, ma'am.[1714.76]
All right, so that was, uh, so I received an email, and they wanted to know, and I just, just for general information, I think over the past or six, five or six years or so, uh, the DRI is required for the Atlanta Regional, uh, from the Atlanta Regional Commission for those counties that are within the ARC
Yes.
to see the impact for traffic, environmental, and all of that. So it isn't, we're not picking on anyone. It's just a requirement now that we have to have because it impacts the entire region.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you. That's all that happens, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions or comments? Anyone else? Okay. Understanding, uh, what the request is and as the council has made mention, we, they are not requesting that we take any action on the variance except to allow them to apply, uh, and everything would be contingent upon, uh, approval by the state before we would be asked to take any other action. So, uh, with that information in hand, I would make a motion that we approve item twenty-two dash zero-one-two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, um, Ms. Jackson.
Okay, we have Councilman Davis as the second.
Councilman Davis, you're quick on the seconds, okay? It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash zero-one-two. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash zero-one-two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item B. Consider a request for revised plat approval for the purpose of combining three lots into one lot for twenty-two point one-four-seven acres at thirteen-thirty, thirteen-forty, and thirteen-forty-six Mount Vernon Road. Located land lot seven fifteen, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcels five, eight, and fifteen, with parcel ID numbers zero-seven, one-five, one-eight-two, oh-oh-oh-five, zero-seven, one-five, one-eight-two, oh-oh-oh-eight, and zero-seven, one-five, one-eight-two, oh-oh-one-five. Application by Matthew Irwin. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, sixty-seven oh-one Church Street. Uh, staff doesn't have any new information.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone here representing the applicant that would want to speak? Any new information? It's my understanding that, uh, this is a request to combine the three lots into one, and just for historical purposes, this is the property on the corner of Lynch Road and Mount Vernon Road that we have already approved. I believe we have, we've approved the development plan for it. Is that correct, Madam City Manager?
That is correct.
Okay. And so they just need to combine the three lots into one, into one parcel in order to go forward. Questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none, then I make a motion that we approve item B. That's twenty-two zero one-six.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Uh, is that Councilman Davis as well?
I'm still waiting for someone to press the button.
You get it, Ms. Candace? No?
Still don't have a vote.
Who raised their hand? Who pushed the button? Councilman Estes says he's pushing the button.
Okay, we have Councilman Estes.
Thank you so much. It's been properly, uh, moved in second, um, by the chairman, and then second by Councilman Estes to approve item twenty-two dash zero-one-six. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash zero-one-six is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And our final item tonight. Item C. Consider a request for revised final plat approval for Emblem Riverside for the purpose of a lot line revision for nine point six-three-six acres at fifteen fifty-one Riverside Parkway. Located land lot one-seventy-six and one-seventy-seven, District One, Section Five, Parcel One. Application by Ray Crocker, LMC Riverside Holdings LLC. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, sixty-seven oh-one Church Street. Uh, staff doesn't have any new information.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, is there anyone that had any question after our conversation on Thursday? As this says, it's a lot line revision. Basically, it does not have any effect in the, uh, density of the project, and I know that we did have an attachment showing that lot line revision between, I believe, phases one and two. Uh, questions, comments? Alrighty. Seeing none, then, uh, make a motion that we approve item C, twenty-two dash zero-two-one.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item twenty-two dash zero-twenty-one. Do we have any, um, additional comments or questions from the elected body? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash zero-two-one is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no other business tonight under that committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We appreciate that. We'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. Um, I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim if you don't mind taking that committee for me.
No problem, Madam Mayor. No business under the Public Improvement and Beautification Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. PR Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have a couple, item, item A held a public hearing to consider a request for a change in agent outlet manager for the alcohol beverage license for the retail package sale of wine and malt beverage at the father's establishment. Current licensing to Kroger company, DBA Kroger, number four eighty-five, located three eight seven five Chapel Hill Road. Current agent outlet manager, Michael Biggs. Proposed agent outlet manager, James Fowler. Crime fees has been paid into the financial department. How you doing this afternoon, Mr., uh, Fowler?
I'm good.
State your name and your, uh, address for the record.
James Fowler, thirty-eight seventy-five Chapel Hill Road.
Okay, good. Do I have any questions from the mayor and council before I make my mo, motion? Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I was, uh, when I was watching, did you all go through the process of Kroger and how they check their, um, for license and people to have their, um, the age to purchase alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. Kind of see that part. And, um, the chief is working on your situation that happened. We hope everyone's safe at your store.
Yeah, everyone's okay.
Good. Thank you so much.
I only have one associate that's not back at work, but she'll be back pretty soon.
Yes, sir. We are so sorry for the incident, and, um, we're glad to hear that report and hope they'll be back soon.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else from the, uh, mayor council? And again, accept our apology, and, uh, and we had a public hearing holding, uh, on last week, and there was no takers, so, uh, I'm going to make a motion we approve twenty-two dash zero-zero-two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash zero-zero-two. Do we have any additional comments or questions from the council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash zero-zero-two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, sir. You're coming out.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Fowler.
Moving right along. Item B. Authorize the road closure and detour around Timber Ridge Road for the Harmony at Douglasville Assistant Living Facility Development Request by Ray Lee and Associates. Mr. Roberts, are you here?
Yes, sir.
State your name and, and your, your title and address.
Greg Roberts, Public Services Department, six-six-nine-five Church Street, or sanitation at douglasvillega.gov. We're fairly easily accessible. Uh, but we had discussed this, uh, on Thursday night for this road closure. It is a repeat road closure, uh, from, uh, two or three months ago. And as I explained on Thursday night, some of the materials that ended up on the job were not suitable, uh, for installation within the right-of-way and for, um, being, uh, accepted for public use. So they now have those materials that are acceptable and got the right stamp, and they are good to go. It's unfortunate, uh, that they had to come back with this, but the work still has to be done for the project to move forward.
Okay. Anyone from the council have any questions? Madam Mayor? Okay. All right, Mr. Roberts, I'm going to make a motion to approve this road closure, twenty-two dash zero-three-zero.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved by the chair, Councilman Davis, and second by Councilmember Adams to approve item twenty-two dash zero-thirty. Do we have any additional comments or questions? How long, Mr. Roberts, do you anticipate what happens?
Three to four weeks. They're asking for a month, but hopefully it will be opened up within about three weeks. Hopefully the work can go with good weather.
Yes, sir.
This coming Friday and Saturday is not good weather.
I know. I know. Thank you so much. Um, any additional comments or questions? Not seeing any.